Thanks for joining us today. We're meeting with two candidates for San Diego School Board. We have Sharon Whitehurst Payne, the incumbent, and a former president, and Luana Richmond, the challenger. And I just want to start by letting people who don't know, know a little bit about you. There are some similarities, I think, between the two of you. Sharon, you were, I think, 40-plus years at San Diego Unified, have a long academic credentials, and have a PhD in administrative policy. And Luana, you also have been in San Diego for 40-plus years, came here when you were six, went through San Diego Unified yourself, and I think have a grandson who may be in the system or is getting into the school system at some point soon?
He's only two, so we've got some time.
Two more years, okay, you've got some time. I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure how old your grandson was. But also, a lengthy academic background and a doctorate in educational leadership. So with that said, there are obviously some differences between the two of you as well, and I hope we're going to kind of talk about some of those in the next hour, but let's jump right into it and talk about school reopening during the pandemic. Obviously, the school board has a plan. The district is implementing it, bringing, I think, up to 12,000 elementary school students back starting next month, those in need and in difficult circumstances. And maybe if that goes well, bringing in more elementary school students. But I want to ask you about, there's a parent group that just was founded and doesn't like that approach, feels that the district hasn't been forthcoming enough with a reopening timeline, with transparency, and with target dates to get students out of the house and into campus. So let me just start with you, Sharon. How would you assess the district's reopening strategy? And what do you say to those parents who are upset and looking for something a little different?
A couple of things. First of all, I want to correct the record. I did 31 years with San Diego City Schools before I did 10 years with the university.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, I think I got that from your website, so my apologies.
Just the total picture. Some people don't know the nuances, but I had a good year from City Schools.
Thank you.
Also, you're talking now about the opening. One thing I've learned in my four-and-a-half years is that you always have two factions. You have the faction that is ready to open immediately, and then you have the faction that is starting a group. I think yesterday it was, they put out on the website, "Do not start now. Be considerate of our children. Safety is a key factor." So that's the one thing you learn as a politician, that you're always going to have the pros and the cons. And it's a matter of which group is the most vocal or the initial group or whatever. So part of that's in that arena. The other part of it is, I really think that we perhaps could have been more open as we were in the beginning with this whole COVID process. In the beginning, we were right up front and said, "We're closing schools for three weeks." And we did exactly that. We closed them with the knowledge that we didn't know what we were stepping into, i.e., no one has had anything like this in 100 years. So we never realized that we would be closing schools for this long. Our thoughts were initially, "Let's take care of feeding the children. Let's get devices out to them and see if we can't ameliorate some of the factors that would limit or restrict their knowledge and their basic fundamental needs to eat." And we took care of that in a timely fashion. We did so with distributing the learning devices. And we gave teachers the option to just get out there and connect with their children. We learned some things from that and realized that we needed tighter controls over what was happening in the classroom, i.e., what was happening with learning. And as a result of that, we went ahead and put some restrictions in. All of the board members were adamant that we needed more control over what was happening with the learning. And we needed more involvement from not only teachers, but from the administrators and all the other parties. And so that's what we've done in an attempt to do that with the distance learning. With opening the schools, we decided to intervene by bringing in a panel of experts. And they've been advising us as we've gone forward step by step. We've now gotten through the stage of the first phase of it. We know that we are bringing them back. In fact, today is Tuesday. There should be a workshop for principals today discussing when they want to open within the next couple of weeks to bring online the initial 12,000 that you talked about. And after then, we have a plan to roll it out so that all elementary schools will be back then once we see how this experiment goes with bringing in smaller groups and what we can do to deal with any kind of virus spreading or the need to shut down on the classroom or need to shut down in the school. We've spent since last spring $45 million on equipment. So we have equipment. We have all of the shields and the devices for gas, et cetera, the equipment for staff. But now we need to roll it out and to try it to see if we can make it work for this small group, and then we'll start to expand from that point.
Thank you. Luana, what do you think about the district's approach to reopening? And are you satisfied with it?
Well, I mean, I think, first of all, I don't think reopening the schools should be a political decision. I think it should be based on a combination of science and creative problem solving. I applaud the district's decision to consult with a panel of experts from UCSD to help inform them about the way the disease works and make some recommendations. I do, and maybe it's because it's how I approach the work I do in my day job, believe in transparency and inclusive problem solving. I don't think that one-size-fits-all is the right answer. There, you know, Sharon brings up a good point. Just as there are parents who are eager to have school reopened, there are other parents who have no interest in bringing their child anywhere near a school until this whole thing is resolved. I also don't necessarily agree with the approach to only focus on elementary school students. I think that there are high school students and middle school students who also have special needs or are at risk or experiencing some, you know, dire situations, circumstances, or conditions. And I think this is where including more community stakeholders in the problem-solving process may have yielded a better, more comprehensive solution. I do agree with not bringing everybody back all at once and going slowly to see what works and what doesn't work. But I also think that the reality is this disease isn't going anywhere anytime soon. And so in addition to coming up with strategies for how to get back to in-person learning, which is what we all want ideally, also to look at more approaches to how distance learning is actually being deployed and how teachers and students are able to engage with each other in order to make sure that none of the social-emotional learning is lost. I've, you know, listened to some teachers complain that the current process is really prescriptive and that it doesn't leave them a lot of room for student engagement or to allow the students to engage with each other.
Yeah, let's talk about distance learning for a little bit. That's a good segue. How would you, Luana, evaluate what's taken place? And what, if you were on the board, what would you suggest to make it better? Because a lot of kids are struggling with that for reasons, some of which you've enumerated, you know, devices and Sharon mentioned lunches. Obviously, food is an issue too. I mean, so there's the home environment. But how do you make it better? There's 100,000 students that are all kind of struggling together, some doing better than others.
I think some of it is just making sure that as you're getting your stakeholder input, that it is truly an inclusive process that involves stakeholders from a variety of different situations. I was recently in a conversation with a parent who is very well situated. They live in a home in La Jolla, and their issue is not food insecurity or access to devices. Their concerns are more about the social well-being of their child and how they can make sure that they don't become withdrawn or that they lose out on opportunities to learn how to engage with their peers. I think that, so the work that I do, I do operational excellence and organizational change management, which involves looking at data, but also getting the voice of the customer and taking the time to be thoughtful, but also building in opportunities for continuous improvement. Sometimes we let perfect be the enemy of good enough when we delay rolling something out because we think that's our one shot at getting it right, when the reality is you can roll out what you think is your best option, but also create opportunities for feedback so that it can be continuously improved to get better. And I know that's a lot harder based on scale, but I think that there are some opportunities that haven't been taken advantage of.
Sharon, how, in a new term, how would you handle distance learning?
I think that we are listening to our customers, and that's why we've said that schools will determine when they open. That point was kind of a sticky point. Schools will be listening to their parents as they have been throughout the process. In fact, some principals have gotten in their cars and driven over to the houses when they noted issues. I personally have gone on tours with the principal and the superintendent to homes, just connecting with students. And that's K through 12 at the elementary and at the high school level. I think that when you start talking about a system so large where you have 160-some-odd schools, that to implement a plan that works perfectly for everyone is unrealistic. But each school site knows its customers. They know their students. It's one principal says, "I know my babies. I can look right up the hill there and see my babies," meaning he could look up there and see his children in houses around the school. And he doesn't hesitate to get in a car, go by the school, go by the homes to visit and do whatever is necessary. So within that framework, we had some discussion about whether or not we should allow them to open as they see fit. If after the workshop today, principals feel like, "Well, we can get it together in a couple of days. We'd like to open then." Or if you feel like you need the whole two weeks to work out busing and all the other logistical things that go along with opening a school and with an undetermined amount of students on campus, because we already know that schools in my community and in Richard's community will need more kids on campus than, say, a school in La Jolla or elsewhere because of the way we looked at the neediest first, which was my push, that rather than to design a program that would say, "Let's just look at opening schools and bring in any 25% and mechanically follow that process." We decided that some children need more support early in the process. And that's when we went ahead and said, "Be sure to look out for the EL students, the special education students, those students who are behind. Those are your top-class customers and right up front. Let's bring them in initially to see what we can do for them." So principals have been in touch with their students and their parents and feeding that information up through the system. And it's not all been just San Diego City Schools as this behemoth organization that's trying to cram something top-down to everybody in the system. There are checkpoints all along, and we're trying to decentralize it more and give principals that authority to, with the support of these parent educators and central office codes, to implement a plan on site.
Let me ask both of you a follow-up on distance learning. So much of this is driven by the teachers' union contract that spells out a minimum of three hours of instruction. Is that sufficient? How do we evaluate if that level of specificity of training, of instruction, is working? I mean, I have two kids in the school system, and, you know, some teachers are better than others and some classes are better than others. So it doesn't seem like, you know, it's hard to approach this universally. How do you kind of keep a handle on that and improve that for everyone? And Sharon, why don't you go first?
I just heard an anecdotal example of a teacher in a city school who, whose students, they weren't supposed to spend as much time, but she had the time, and the students were all willing to spend the time they wanted to stay with her in a high school. So that gives the teachers the flexibility. If they feel like their students need more time and want to, they were just hanging out because they were working on an assignment, and they could have gone on and done it at home, but instead, they chose to sit there with the teacher and their peers, working as if they were in a classroom with extended time. That's what, that's why I'm optimistic about it because I know for a fact that in the old model, pre-pandemic, we had some schools in La Jolla and elsewhere where the teacher would give them an assignment for them to go on the internet, et cetera. Those children had the internet, but other children coming from here did not have that kind of access. And so with the pandemic coming out now, all of our children have devices. And if there's a problem with a hotspot, we have ways to help them with that. So it's kind of leveled the field in that sense so that children who are interested in a certain topic, they can dig deeper, they can come together with the Zoom, they can do small groups, they can work together, et cetera. We can bring in additional support right in the classroom like we're doing with, over here, the Elementary Institute of Science. They're working with our elementary schools in the Lincoln Cluster, excuse me, to help them with science in the morning so that we have a scientist from the institute and their support staff, along with teachers, going online, Zooming, teaching the entire class and then breaking it down in small groups and working with them in a small group right on the Zoom and other devices. So I'm optimistic that, yes, we will have some emotional loss, but we're also given the test on that. Teachers are administering an instrument to determine who needs that extra support. And then beyond that, our counseling staff, et cetera, are involved. It's not a perfect model, but I do like the fact that now we have our hands on all the children and can see what they're doing and work with them in a better way. So.
Thank you.
The American Association of Pediatrics.
Chris, one sec. Chris, one sec. Let's have Luana get a chance to answer that question. Luana, how would you respond to, you know, that question of the teachers' union and the contract that they have and the three hours of education? Thoughts on all of that?
Well, so first, I heard you say the word "three hours minimum", which is different from a maximum. So I think that part of it is going to depend largely on, you know, how it's interpreted. You're always in any organization going to have those individuals who choose to only do the minimum. But you will also have people who go above and beyond and do far more. One of the things that I see this as is one of those opportunities where you bring in creative problem solving because one of the challenges with distance learning is people don't want kids sitting in front of a screen, staring at a screen for hours upon hours. But there are a lot of ways that you can break the fourth wall and engage them in active learning and even social-emotional learning through the computer. To give you an example, which I'm not advocating because I don't know that people want their kids to take boxing, but three days a week, I do a boxing class through Zoom. It's very active. The instructor's there. It's almost like being in the class, except I don't have a sparring partner. So I don't know that it's necessarily a barrier other than the interpretation and how it's played out. I think that a big part of it is how we, you know, I understand that people anticipate and we expect that no matter what we do, there will be some social-emotional learning loss. But I think that as well as the hardcore curriculum, you know, the basics are very important, that it's also important to build in play because children learn while they play. And I, you know, would like to see a little bit more opportunity for them to engage because that could help mitigate that loss.
I need to clarify something here, just to say that we're implementing the full school year now. So we have all of those support teachers, and that's a requirement. So those requirements are being met, not during the academic time, but otherwise. Thank you, sorry.
Chris, the American Association of Pediatrics says this absolutely nuts and a sad comment on American society. The teachers are not considered essential workers considering how important it is for kids to, you know, not just socialize, but to learn and to advance emotionally and intellectually. And to me, that gets back to the point that Assemblywoman Shirley Weber has been making for years, that California public schools worry more about the interests of adult employees than about kids. So I'd be interested to get your perspective first on the question of whether teachers should be considered essential workers, and then on the larger point made by Dr. Weber, that our schools are not oriented to the interests of kids, but to the interests of teachers.
Luana, do you want to go first?
Sure. So one of the things I had been talking about before we even got into this pandemic situation is we have an environment currently where we've been exercising zero tolerance for certain behaviors with children and not having that same level of tolerance with adults and not understanding that children see and they learn what they see. And, you know, if we want to instill in them a sense of integrity, it's good for them to see us exhibit that in our levels of accountability. I do think that everything that has happened in the last six months has helped us understand, has helped the world understand how vitally important our K through 12 systems are, not only in the business of educating children, but just how important they are to the way our society is structured and what people who touch the school district in a variety of ways are able to do or not do based on what's happening with the schools. I think that our teachers are more than just essential workers. I think in many ways, they're heroic. They, in many cases, spend more time with the student than in terms of their waking hours, in many cases, than their actual parents do. I do believe that we need to really be conscious of what children need and what their whole needs are. But there are a lot of different programs and services that are being launched and that are already in place that are supporting some of those needs. And I think that we have to also pay in mind the fact that before the pandemic, there was a teacher shortage. I don't anticipate that that's a problem that'll get better in the future. So being able to recruit and retain good teachers is also an important part of being able to serve our students and meet their needs.
Well, first of all, one thing that the pandemic has done has demonstrated to the world how essential teachers are. And teachers had such a low status in this country, unlike in some countries. We really had a low status in the community where teachers would tell their own children, "Don't become a teacher." Even though they loved teacher. I remember a Teacher of the Year once said to her child, "No, you will not become a teacher. You go and be a doctor or whatever else, but anything but teaching." And now we find that parents, I've had parents to tell me how to teach kindergarten children because, and I mean second language folks. I did a Zoom with six different ethnic groups in Mid-City, and they were telling me, "Well, we need to break up the lesson some and do a small bit here and a small bit there." And I found it fascinating because all of a sudden, everybody has become a teacher. I think someone on your staff had to take a leave of absence because he has a kindergartner in the first grade running an article in the paper because now everyone realizes teachers are essential to our lives, even though we didn't give them that credit before. As far as adults not being oriented to teaching and to children, I think that no one goes into education because they want to get rich or because they feel like this is the only status position that they can gain. I think that folks are disillusioned over time, and that's one of the things that I'm really excited about us doing now and henceforth. Hopefully, we'll be able to allow those people who are at the point in their lives where they're ready to move on, let them move on, and we'll be able to bring in the folks who are really excited about where we are and see every experience and every opportunity as a reason to grow and to really support education even more. I mean, I'm still naive, an older person, but I'm still naive and I still believe that. In terms of the teacher shortage piece, that's kind of a myth. I think that folks think that we have a dearth or shortage of elementary teachers or we have a shortage of just general teachers. In my experience, we do not have the shortage of just teachers-teachers. It's in specific categories, i.e. math, science, special education. And we've had ongoing shortages in those particular areas. So we've got to do something with intern programs and other models to meet the identified needs of the workforce rather than just generically, everyone wants to be an elementary teacher or an English teacher, et cetera. You have to focus it in the areas where we have a need.
In 2014, the legislature of Jerry Brown passed the local control funding formula, which was meant to divert resources specifically to low-income kids, to foster kids, and to English-language learners. A report by the Legislative Analyst Office and a report by the State Auditor's Office found that instead, the funds were not used specifically to help these disadvantaged kids, but in many urban districts to provide pay raises. This gets back to the point of my last question, Shirley Weber's view that we care about adult employees in school districts more than we do about kids, or else we would make sure this money actually went directly to help kids instead of the teacher raises. So I, once again, take a stab at trying to get a comment on this. Do we value the adult interests of employees of school districts more than we do school kids? Should we strike a better balance? Incumbent, if you want to, if the incumbent wants to answer first?
Question to you, Karen.
To me only, okay. Number one, Weber did, I won't comment on that study that was done, but I would like to say that San Diego Unified School District uses unduplicated counts, which, just to explain it to everyone, that means that if a child has been identified as special education, as homeless, the categories that are specified, we count, we give them funding for each time they're counted, unlike some districts that do not do duplicated funding. We provide duplicated funding in San Diego Unified. We've had several studies done in San Diego, not paid for by San Diego Unified School District, but by institutions such as Stanford and UCLA, which demonstrated that we've been using our funds in a way that would support students, and we've seen a turnaround. For example, the notion came up that we're not implementing the blueprint for African-American studies. And I understand when that study was done, that plan was put in place, our numbers were 25%, and 33% of our students were graduating with the A to G requirements for UC entry. And now we're higher than that. We're in the 70s, upper 70s, 80s. So we've shown some improvement and are continuing to do so. One of the things that I think that, you know, people think that they're doing a lot for schools now, but when you consider what we're doing in California in comparison to other school districts, we're not meeting that need. We cut monies out with the Prop 15, Prop 13 at the time, and we just said, "Schools will make it." Now Brown thought he was doing something, and that turns out is a ceiling rather than an ongoing basement, a floor for us. So if you're talking about class size, the only level where we really, we have small classes is at the K3 level. It's at the lower level. But I don't know where you're from, but compare us to schools, say, in Boston or in Connecticut, et cetera, where they have a much lower student-to-teacher ratio, and they've had that in some of the other private schools. I think you have to look at the total picture and it's just not one isolated study that had an agenda before it even got started.
The LAO and the State Auditor's Office are not Fox News.
Luana, can I handle that? I don't, do you want, I'll give you 30 seconds, Sharon, if you want to respond.
I'll let Luana go. I think I made my point.
Okay, Luana.
So could you repeat the question? Because I just want to make sure I answered the question. I'm sorry. Because I just want to make sure I answered the question, I'm sorry.
Sure. In 2014, California passed the most significant education change in decades when it adopted the Local Control Funding Formula. Jerry Brown and the legislature said that this would direct more money to schools that had disproportionate amounts of foster language kids or foster kids, English-language learners, and poor kids. Subsequently, the nonpartisan Legislative Analyst Office and the nonpartisan California State Auditor's Office came out with studies that showed, in many cases, urban districts did not use this money to help the kids. They used this money for pay raises, which gets back to Dr. Weber's fundamental point that California school districts care more about adult employees than they do about their kids. So I was just hoping for a reaction to that.
So first of all, I'll say, when it comes to research and studies, I don't think it's appropriate to only listen to the studies that tell us what we want to hear. The other part is the research didn't say San Diego Unified did anything. It's only personal if you can identify with some of those findings as behaviors that you engaged in. I will say that I think with local control funding, there is a move towards having greater controls and accountability to make sure that the funds are accounted for to show how they're helping children in specific populations. I also wanted to make a comment about the Blueprint for African-American Students. That blueprint has not been implemented. It's not a comment or a rumor. The district said they would adopt it and had a task force study it and say, "Yeah, this is something we're going to do," and then didn't do it. But if we want to talk about research and studies, we can also talk about when they teach us. That talks about the disparity in disciplinary practices that shows that African-American male students who would have been directly benefited by the adoption of the blueprint are instead being suspended three times as much as their white male counterparts. And this disparity is at its greatest in K through 3, which I'm sure has an impact on learning environment and experience, not only for the students that are impacted, but also for their peers who observe these impacts. I think that local control funding is a good idea because there's definitely some opportunity to do enhanced and enriched programs and services for students that need additional scaffolding, as well as to look at structure and process to see what can be done differently so that we have fewer of these disparities.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the board for questions.
Well, let me ask about the trouble with the pandemic, bring it back to the local level. You've got school districts all around the country facing this problem, and the result has been lower enrollment. And in Los Angeles, for example, the numbers were down by 6,000. Here in San Diego, it was down by some 25,000, including a large number of kindergarten students. Or 2,500, sorry. Including kindergarten students were down by 1,700. So I'm wondering, first of all, were you prepared for that? Did you expect that? Was this a big surprise that it was this low? Given that the public schools are competing against private schools already? And what are we going to do now that this is happening to help those students that are not coming? How to help them catch up when they do finally show up, particularly those kindergartners?
That's my passion. 2,500 students down, and with 1,700 of them being Ks, we anticipated some students not coming back. But even within that, I think the Ks took some folks by surprise. Last spring, we had a couple of thousand kids who didn't show up after we ended in March. We had a couple of kids, a couple of thousand kids who never came online. And they were primarily kindergartners, over half of them were Ks. So that sent a red flag to me immediately, stop. We've got to find a way to get to the kindergartners. So when it came out this fall that the Ks, again, were problematic, I was not surprised. And you have to look at it from the perspective of schooling and that whole educational process. I, once in my 31 years in San Diego City Schools, I had an intern program. I was running the affirmative action program and simultaneously running a teaching program designed to bring in people of college, some diversity. And at one point, when we first started, we had 15 interns out there, we got up to as many as 30. But one of the things I did was to go around and visit all of these classrooms multiple times. And the kindergarten level was always a fascinating one. Because it was, the program was K through 6. And to look at what was happening with the kindergartners, you have to understand what happens at that level. These children, some of them, I understand, come in on their parents' hips, as you would call it, around the waist, holding on, in the arms. They don't realize the separation point here, and that happens even during regular times. They don't realize that now it's time for you to stand on your own feet, come in the class, be separated from mom and dad for a while, and to begin to learn fundamentally what the foundational process is for schooling. So this fall, I knew we would have a problem with that because mothers love them and they think, "Well, this is my baby," et cetera. But there comes a time where they have to separate from home. And it wasn't happening fast enough. And that's why I made a comment on, at the board meeting and a couple of other places, that if you know, maybe you have a grandchild in your home or you know a child next door who's still holding on to mom and wants to play around. Those are the children who are not coming back to school. Even taking into consideration those who've gone to private school, they're still not coming to school. So we've got to run some kind of intervention to show that breakage there. What happened in the spring was that the teachers had spent the first part of the year, as they do, just getting them to sit down, walk in a line straight with the group, understand, you don't talk out, raise your hand, just the fundamentals of going to school. That's where they spent their time, rather than a lot of time on them using the devices. And so when it was time to go home, they went back to what they knew, which was playing around and not doing their work. Now, to break that cycle with mothers trying to do that is very difficult. Because in those sessions that I talked about in Mid-City, where I had the various languages, Swahili and just six or seven languages, we did a special group with them. And we found they were consistent, that the mothers had complaints about the kindergartners. So I know that's a group, and that's why I made the comment personally. If I had my way, I would bring all Ks back. I would use a cafeteria for one group and just spread them out. The teacher has the entire classroom in that cafeteria within distance. The teacher could put on the mask and all of that, just to show them what it means to go to school, how to organize themselves, et cetera. Put one out in the courtyard, one in the auditorium, if they have one at the school. But find a way to establish that foundation for the kindergarten children because they don't know what it is, and they will just be off. I was at the middle school and the high school, and they would always say, "Oh, that elementary school didn't do a good job. This is the class that came from," because they could tell about their training. And in the same way, the elementary 1 through 5, they're looking to the Ks to establish ground rules. And it's not happening with that. So I would really push to bring them back as quickly as possible to establish boundaries. This is what schooling means and is. And I'm sorry to have talked so long, but that's just my take on the Ks.
It's an important issue. Luana, how would you handle declining enrollment, especially as it relates to kindergartners?
So I think, you know, specifically with kindergartners, we have to understand that the pandemic has caused an extreme disruption in everybody's life. And people don't like change. For many parents, whatever they have already set up to do in terms of what they're doing with their children, that's a piece of normalcy. And if they're looking at taking on one more thing that they have to do at home or, you know, one more thing that they have to try to figure out, particularly parents who are struggling, I think that one of the things that would really help is identifying strategies and supports to ease the transition. You know, Sharon brings up a good point. Under normal conditions, that separation anxiety and that transition from your child not being in school to them being in school, it's not just hard on the child. In many cases, it's hard on the parent too, because, you know, for many of us, we enjoy our little people. So I think really, one of the things that can help is working with parents to find, to identify what their concerns are and help identify ways to make it a transition that they can feel comfortable with and trust. Because right now, there is so much uncertainty that, you know, for a lot of people, they'd rather just keep their child doing whatever they were doing before until things settle down a little bit. And I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with that choice. I know children need early childhood education and exposure. But I also understand where, for a lot of people, especially when they know that kindergarten is not legally required, there are some people that are making that choice. And I think it's really, you know, it's good to speculate and, you know, use the conditions before the pandemic to come up with a theory or practice or an idea around what's going on. But I think it would be good to actually ask the parents why they're making that choice and what would make it easier for them to make the choice to bring their child to school.
One other thing I'd like to say about that, and that is, it's not only those parents who have the issues that you outlined, Luana. But Dr. Evans and I had a conversation about bringing the Ks back, like, yesterday, do what we can for them. And he was telling me about a physician he works with, who said, who lives in Poway, who has a kindergartner. And he said, "The child was sitting there, and he and the teacher were doing whatever on the Zoom, and the child was just looking at him like, you know, blank, like he's crazy." Because it's a new process, you're right, it's a totally new process. But it's not only parents who are having difficulties with other children and other things going on in their lives, it's also parents who've been to school here, who know what's going on, east coast, west coast, wherever. When LA had the problem with 6,000 kids, kindergarten, I knew then we had a problem coming. And I was trying to warn them. And so I went out to a couple of schools, "We've got to get on it." Because right now, they are just happy as they can be. And no kindergarten is not mandatory. But I've been pushing for pre-K or preschool for all children because I realize that the children in La Jolla and in Scripps Ranch are getting a head start on children here in my district and in Richard's district. They're getting a head start. I have a four-year-old great nephew, and, I mean, they already know numbers and alphabet and all that other stuff. They know that kind of academic things because they are in school, they're around kids in the Richmond, I mean, in the DC area, in the suburbs. They're already exposed to that. But it's not only that process, it's a whole thing of learning the culture of schooling and what our society is about. So it transcends not only race, I've heard it from all races. I've heard it from poor people, rich people, whatever. They don't know what to do with the kindergartners. And so that's why I would love to, as someone who has experience at that level, working with teachers, I would love to get them back soon as possible.
So I do want to say, my experience as a mother and a grandmother helps me understand the perspective of parents. And I think that it's a combination. And we should never underestimate the importance of making sure to connect with the person who is actually making the decisions.
I would like to ask both of you about policing and police officers at schools. Since you both met with the board last time, obviously, the pandemic has happened, but so has Black Lives Matter movement. And I know that a lot of community groups have spoken out about situations. We've seen clips of videos on the TV news here. What are your thoughts about police officers at schools? And I'll just leave the question at that.
Luana, you want to go first on this one?
Sure. I think that the police officer should not be the first person a student sees when they arrive on a campus, no matter what grade they're in. I don't see how that sets them up for having a great day. I think that, of course, we want our schools to be safe and that the purpose of our police is to provide public safety, to protect and serve. I think that we don't necessarily need to have police officers stationed at the schools. Again, I think that when there is a problem in a classroom, it's easy to call Officer Joe if we know he's right down the hall and not think of other ways to solve a problem. Then if we know we're going to have to wait 15 minutes for him to get there, then we'll think about a way, different ways to address or respond. You know, the reality is, and I've known, I didn't just find out this summer, I've known for a long time that some students do not feel safe around the police on their campuses. Their reasons are based on experiences that they've either had or things that they've observed or, you know, at minimum, things they've seen on the news. That's not a universal feeling for all students, but I think it's a feeling that should be taken in consideration. And I don't see a good argument for having them actually physically stationed at every school. And if we are going to make that a policy and a practice, it should be balanced where they're not overpolicing schools in one area and not policing schools in another area at all. Because that leads to disparate outcomes as well.
Sharon?
First of all, police officers are not supposed to be a part of that campus, of any campuses in San Diego Unified. We've decreased the number of police books we've had in San Diego City Schools since I've been on the board. They were supposed to be assigned to a site so that they could get to another school if they needed to in that cluster. For example, at Lincoln, the person that just has an office at Lincoln, but if something came up at Porter, they should be able to get over to Porter. That's the way it was designed. Personally, when I was a teacher at Mission Bay High School, we didn't have an officer on campus. And so I guess the move nationwide was to put officers on all the high school campuses. In doing that, I think what's happened, and I've spoken to the superintendent about this, you come up with staff members feeling that they're a part of that campus. That was not what they were designed to be there for. I talk all the time about the example at Paradise Hills Elementary School, where we had a homeless person, a homeless male, to get on campus and get into the office, come down the hallway, main campus, get into the bathroom. And all females were in the office, and they happened to discover it and could not get him out. And they tried calling the San Diego PD, which means that the officer from Morse should have been able to respond, but he was busy probably with some project on campus. And then the regular, we have other officers who are roaming around, who are supposed to be able to pick up on those calls. And then San Diego City is our backup, and they weren't available. And it rolled over, and National City had to respond to that call. That makes me very uneasy and unhappy because I'm more concerned about the external factor rather than them policing on campus. That's not their role, they're not supposed to be there for discipline and managing a campus per se. They're there for the external security of all of our campuses. And we supervise some of the other schools, like Don Pris is on our roll. So we have quite a few schools for them to be getting around to. If they're tied up doing discipline on a campus, that means they can't respond to that call at Paradise Hills Elementary School. So I have a big problem with that, and the superintendent agreed that that is problematic. Where I'm really disturbed with city school survey is that we do an annual survey, and we're told how students respond and all of this. But to hear that students feel unsafe with police on campus is disconcerting because that's not the purpose of their presence on the campuses. Their presence is there to protect them from anyone coming in. And I know we had an incident at Lincoln this year where a homeless person got on that campus, and we had to deal with that. So it's more the external factor that I've been preoccupied with rather than the internal. So it's more the external factor that I've been preoccupied with rather than the internal factor. And that's why I stated that I went to the workshop and heard the children saying that they feel unsafe, that someone will come on campus with a weapon and shoot, you have the mass shooting. So that was their level of discomfort. I also now understand that it's not only the external factor for them because some schools are using police as a discipline. And that should not be and will be corrected.
Thank you. Luana, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that there are actually school police who have their offices at schools that are not high schools. They have offices, some of them spin, operate from elementary schools, I know for sure. And I would imagine if they're at high schools and elementary schools, I think it's safe to guess there are probably also some at middle schools. And the reality is, I agree, they should not be involved in the disciplinary practice. And I think it causes things to escalate in ways that they don't necessarily need to.
And one clarification on that. Our police force is, we only have thirty-some people on the police force and that includes detectives, officers, et cetera. We try to house one on each high school campus for perimeters. There may be a spillover. I know Bell was complaining because they didn't have one on their campus and some others. So they manage that within the boundaries. But it's not that they are just assigned there to be assigned.
Other questions?
Yes, I also wanted to ask, I apologize, there's a horn honking if you hear it, I'm sorry. I wanted to ask with the growing populations of Latino students, Asian students, undocumented students, parents who may not speak English, second language learners, how do you both or will you both ensure that all the parents' voices will be heard? A lot of them do not go to the board meetings, they can't go to the board meetings. They might not be able to tune in on Zoom because they might not have internet access. So aside from translating letters that are sent home, what else can you do, should be done to ensure that all these voices from the parents are brought to the table?
Sharon, you want to tackle that one first?
I'll talk about that first. I really like the model that we've implemented in Mid-City. Because as you know, that community is the most diverse in the city. Recently, this summer, we took our information gathering to a next level, which was to have single group discussions with each group. We had, for example, Swahili, we had Karen, K-A-R-E-N, somebody thought I was saying Korean, but it's Karen. We had Spanish, we had six, actually seven, I attended six of the seven groups so that we could listen to them and give them feedback. I think ongoing sessions like that are important. One thing that we've done since I've been on the board for the last four years, we come together around the issue of the LCAP. And we have an annual session where we bring all the various languages together in a very open and sharing manner where we all have our own translations at various tables and we share. We have ongoing workshops building up to that meeting that's usually held just before we send the information into the district on the LCAP. We have monthly meetings with the clusters and we're waiting for the other clusters to come online. One of them has already started. But that's the kind of ongoing dialogue that should be done, that we've done before.
Luana?
So I like all the things that I've heard, but I think it's also important to partner with organizations and groups that are working with these different communities and meet people where they are and ask them how they want to be communicated with. One of the things that, because I work at a large institution where communication is one of our greatest challenges and sometimes it's time sensitive, understanding how people want to be communicated with helps you meet them where they are. The other part is, I've heard some feedback from community members, particularly when the pandemic struck, that there's a heavy reliance on volunteer translators and interpreters. And I think the things that we value, that value is demonstrated partially by where we prioritize contracting and having professional relationships and respecting the work that people do. The other part is there are a lot of nonprofit organizations that are already working with these different populations and already, for lack of a better word, are considered trusted messengers that can help get information out more quickly as well as facilitate greater understanding beyond just language interpretation, but also help to shore up cultural competency.
I just want to clarify on that. That is how we had these, how we were able to do the things that I articulated through the groups, the community groups and community organizations, through Say Yes, through the African Alliance, on and on and on. We have those things in place and they are the ones who have been the backbone of what we're doing in Mid-City. I think also perhaps with some of them, they're interested in additional revenue for, there's some kind of issue going with translation. We were working through those issues where, for example, I was at a board meeting a month ago and someone was typing to me that they had no Spanish translation. And I was speaking at the time, but I was able to really drill down to find out why isn't a board meeting being translated? And the district was saying that, well, we had it, no one came online. So there's that ongoing communication piece where folks know that if they get to me, we will iron out whatever the problems are. We've developed that kind of relationship so that, see, Say Yes and all these other groups, social groups and African Alliance and Asian groups work with us to accomplish the tasks that we want to do for children.
Luana?
So I just want to say that partnerships in Mid-City are largely driven, community-driven. They have a parent-student-resident organization that really drives advocacy and engagement. I would love to see that model duplicated in other areas. I don't understand how we can have a board member who's familiar with this approach and these processes and not have them implemented in areas that are currently not being served. The Morris Cluster and the Lincoln Cluster, those things aren't happening there. And the Crawford Cluster is a benefit of being adjacent to the Hoover Cluster where they're receiving the benefit of the work of those nonprofit organizations. So yeah, I think it's great that it's happening. I'd like to see it happening more so that a greater number of people have access and feel supported.
And I think, I'm glad you brought that up. That Crawford Hoover Cluster area, there, we're designing a community-based school right now. We're planning for that. In fact, I have a meeting after this about that. But one of the things I want to say in response to what you said about the Lincoln and the Morris Cluster clusters, number one, those communities are different from Mid-City. Mid-City is the model that everybody comes in, they work together, they have one common interest. And they work together like a team I've never seen anywhere, in and out of education, period. It's really beautiful to see how they work together. And the Morrison, the Lincoln Cluster, they'll have a dedicated culture where it seems that folks are willing to work together. And schools will tell you, we don't want to be a part of that. I've brought that notion to them and they'll say right up front, we are interested in the Morris Cluster, we're interested in Filipino issues and we don't want to hear about what they're doing in Mid-City. So if you're going to give people freedom to do what they think is best for their community, then you don't impose what you think is the perfect model on other schools. So you have to work with a cluster to determine how you can meet those needs. In the Lincoln Cluster, we're doing some things, I think, that are also almost revolutionary for this cluster in terms of now having groups like the Elementary Institute of Science, which I serve on their board, the Deep Program groundwork, having the Deep Program and then groundwork for the Earth Lab, having outside entities come in and work with the cluster in a way to impact learning. When Roosevelt Blackman was in charge of the cluster, he did take us around as a cluster to various institutions so that we could get to see as a cluster, this is something that's going to help us. And he kind of drove it for that particular cluster. And I think what you have to do is to have each cluster work through what's best for them rather than saying, you will do this or else.
Luana, just fifteen more seconds on this issue before I move on to another one. Do you want to have a closing thought?
Says to a point, except that I do think that it's not reasonable to take credit for work that was, that the community actually engaged in. But I do also support engaging with community organizations because in the Lincoln Cluster, they have organizations in their neighborhood that are working with students. In the Morris Cluster, they have the same thing. And I would love to see partnerships with those organizations so that people who are already serving these families have that connection because it'll help increase family engagement, parent engagement. Because the parents already trust the people at these organizations.
Let me ask you a question, let's move on to another question. We've talked about this for quite a bit. The achievement gap, something you both have talked to us previously about and obviously care deeply about trying to combat. The pandemic may make this worse. So what specifically, you know, San Diego has an interesting history with it. In recent years, some test scores and graduation rates have gone in the wrong direction, but college readiness has improved. So kind of a mixed bag. I'm just curious, what one or two things would you focus on to really try to reduce that achievement gap, to change the field there? And Luana, why don't you go first?
I think the number one thing I would focus on would probably be the disparity in discipline. And I say that because the way that the feeling of belonging and being welcome in the classroom has a tremendous impact on the learning experience. And even though there are, you know, not all students of color, not all black students or Latino students are being suspended, there is a message or a feeling that students get and the fact that it's concentrated in K through three, which is the very beginning of a child's academic journey. It sends messages that turn some kids off on school. It's really hard to expect them to achieve and be successful in a space that they don't feel like they belong in. The other part is, I think that the ethnic studies curriculum that was mandated by the state, but the district has decided to implement early, will also be something to make sure that it's implemented in a way that's inclusive and a positive experience. Because I think another aspect of that belonging is whether or not you see yourself reflected in the curriculum. If everything that you learn all day in a classroom is about other people and you can't identify or connect with it, it's another thing that can turn you off from learning. So those are just the top two that come to mind. Of course, there's enrichment and special education and all types of learning support and enhancement. Understanding that every child has a different learning style and that learning style is not necessarily a disability. I think having a strengths-based focus on education also helps to build a sense of efficacy or students being able to see themselves being successful. When you highlight to them where they're successful and where their strengths are, I think a lot of those things will help. But I would focus in on like the ethnic studies curriculum and addressing and resolving the disparity in discipline. And I think restorative practices and trauma-informed care will go a long way because a lot of those disparities are really more about cultural competence and understanding what's actually happening or being communicated or communication styles.
Thank you. Sharon?
Well, I think access and acceptance are two critical factors. I say access because as someone who grew up in the Jim Crow segregated South, I know about being denied access as an individual. It's a part of my history. So that's one of the things, and one of the reasons why I fought to ensure that all of our children have access via the web, et cetera. And that's why I put so much emphasis on the Elementary Institute, Earth Lab, DEEP, et cetera, giving our children, even with the VAPA, Visual and Performing Arts, I'm on the Board of Directors for that. Because I believe in access for all children to everything that's out there. And then give them the opportunity to decide, well, I want to play the flute or I want to play the piano, whatever. Give the children the opportunity and access is a way you do that. You expose them to these things so that they will know whether or not they're interested. And I concur with Luana about acceptance. I would call it acceptance. Because, this is just an anomaly story, but one of my sisters who also grew up in the segregated South, youngest of us all, and her class had to transition over to a white school. They decided to disperse all the African-American from an all-black school over to Juarez up in the city where we shouldn't have gone anyway. And she had a math teacher there who just, she said, she went up and asked her for teacher, for help in a high school class and she kind of turned her nose up and wouldn't really help her. So she told my father about it, who was good in math. And so other children in the class experienced the same thing. So my father actually began to teach her outside. She then shared it with her students, fellow students. So when they went, they just went to class, they already had what they needed outside. So you've got to be, students need to be accepted first in order for them to begin to learn unless they have some strong interventions, such as what we've talked about with access to the knowledge and so forth. When you talk about ethnic studies, which is a part of that acceptance process, City Schools has been driving this equation for, at the very beginning with this, we were the ones pushing the state to bring onboard the ethnic studies. In fact, they kind of lifted us as a little pilot because we've been pushing this equation about ethnic studies. And tell the story, tell the truth. If you're going to do history, you're going, tell the whole story, tell the truth. Tell what happened in, to the black group in Oklahoma. Just tell the story, the truth about things that have happened. And you won't get all this distorted information out there.
Let me ask you a question. This came up in an earlier interview. It was a pretty interesting question and answer. I'm wondering if you use social media and, you know, students are using it all the time. And so I'm wondering what social media outlets you use and how you use them and whether you use them to stay in touch with what students are talking about. The context is, we just did a big project on Hello, called Hello Gen Z about this young generation that's so active and activist and involved right now in ways that older generations maybe weren't. Luana, how about you first?
So let me start with, so my master's is in information systems and I spent the last fifteen years largely doing system analysis and planning. Working at a university, in order to communicate with our students, we had to become fluent in social media. We regularly update our training. I currently use Twitter, Instagram, Facebook. I'm on TikTok just because it's a great place to kind of see how students are feeling, what they're thinking because it's a quick burst. And I have some blogs and I do some web development. I engage with groups now, weekly I've been doing a Google Meet where people just come drop in and ask me whatever they want or talk about whatever they want. I usually start off with a topic, a specific topic, but I also let the conversation go where the audience drives it because it helps me understand what their priorities are instead of me telling them what I think should be important to them.
That's interesting. Sharon, how do you use social media?
How do I use it? I use it primarily through Zooming right now because I have one Zoom after this, next one Duo is something we're into now. I use it with teaching classes when I- I use it with teaching classes when I was at Cal State U.S.A. Marcos. It was a requirement that we had to teach classes online. So that, that's why I'm not surprised now. It worked for the NSF, we were required to do that. I started with technology way back with the first language, I believe it was FORTRAN. I don't even know if you guys have even heard of it, you're too young for it. But the first, one of the first computer programming languages was FORTRAN. I studied at Virginia Tech. And then at UCLA, did APL and TLC, a couple of languages there, quite familiar. I taught it at Old Farrell when I was a teacher there. Now my primary focus is using it as a medium to just go from one Zoom to another or to Duo or to whatever I can do with my modicum amount of time, if you will, running this campaign and running with the district, et cetera.
Where were you born in Virginia? I was born in Virginia.
Oh, where? I think we had this discussion before. I was born in Norfolk.
Oh, yeah, I went to William Mary's.
Okay, well, you were up the way from us, you know, up sixty-four, yes.
Oh, I love Norfolk. Norfolk is such a good beach town. It's not known as a beach town, but it's, the beach areas around there are great.
Since we're talking about technology, how much time have you each spent on the systems that the students are using right now? Have you both used them and tried to get involved in how the process works with online learning? Sharon, you want to go first?
Well, I use the systems that they're using, especially, as I said, the Zoom. And I was teaching a class before, two teachers, on Google Docs and Google. And I personally, I'm waiting for the time when this election is over because I, one of the things I love to do is to get into the classrooms. And last semester, last year, they wouldn't allow us to go online because that was something they had negotiated. This year, we will be able to go into the classrooms along with the administrators by invitation, of course, but still, we'll have that kind of access. Because as a research-oriented person, I like to know for myself and to use systematic approaches to find out what's going on across the system for various teachers.
Luana?
So I have experience with distance learning technology, both as a student and as an instructor. I've worked with Illuminate, which so far I haven't seen anyone taught that, although it never became popular. I used it when I was taking courses at Villanova. I've used Moodle on both sides in terms of giving instruction as well as receiving. Currently at UCSD, we use Canvas and then I've also used Blackboard. Yeah, in addition to that, I've played with Google Classroom a little bit. And then also a lot of the learning activity tools because, believe it or not, even when you're working with adult learners, you have to make the content engaging if you want them to really take it in. Because you have people who learn, you know, there's multimodal learning and you want to make sure that you're engaging all of the person's senses or as many as you can in order to help them learn and retain the information.
We've talked about Ethnic Studies and I think last time we talked about Computer Science, web development was mentioned. I'm wondering if there are any changes to the curriculum as it stands either of you would like to see?
Lots of changes. There are a lot of changes and I really am excited. We've put some monies into implementing Ethnic Studies in our district. We've just put out there hiring some resource teachers, hiring some teachers who will be mentors to other teachers. Training is in the works for all of our teachers. When you start implementing a program, you have two options. You can have that larger group where you impose a class and say, everybody will take Ethnic Studies class, or you can weave it in. And so what we're trying to do is both things at the same time. I.e., there was something called CLAD, people had to have CLAD credentials. At Cal State U.S.A. Marcos, we wove in CLAD strategies into every class. So that if you took a class, you automatically got your CLAD credential because it was woven in. Some universities said, I think San Diego State and some others said, we'll impose four additional classes on students so that they have to take that in order to get their CLAD credential. What we're starting out with initially is offering Ethnic Studies at various levels, at the high school levels across the city. Then we're working simultaneously on developing curriculum so that you should not be able to tell that this is a European history. It should be every group, every racial group is woven in and students can identify and see themselves in the course that's being taught at all levels.
Luana?
So I'm a proponent of and advocate for decolonization of education. I think a lot of the challenges we have socially and culturally can be pointed to the centering of one narrative that reinforces white supremacy and the patriarchy. I think that as we look at teaching, as we teach about different subjects, that we take a more comprehensive view. I think even putting timelines together. And I think at some point, instead of othering different subjects or matters that we look at, for example, when we teach math, a lot of times people think that all math came from Greece because that's the way it's kind of taught in K through twelve. So really, you know, Sharon makes a good point about weaving and bringing things together. I think having a holistic approach. But aside from the decolonization piece, I think it's really important to look at how we can bring back civic or enhance civic education, home economics, some of like the basic life skills. I can tell you as someone who's worked at a university for the last fifteen years that quite often students show up on campus not knowing what the check is, not knowing how to boil water, not knowing how to do a lot of the basic things that you want someone to know how to do as an adult when they're on their own. And we have to be realistic. We will have students that go to a community college or university or some other trade school and then we'll have students that go directly into the workforce. And so K through twelve, in many instances, is the only opportunity we get to prepare people to be self-sufficient, civically engaged adults in their life going forward.
Thank you.
Beyond just the social media aspect of the young students of today, what role do you think that they should play in what the board does? Because, you know, we've seen them organizing around defunding school police. We've seen them having school walkouts for climate change and gun violence. They're very organized and wanting to have a say in what their schools and their communities do for them. How would you engage the students themselves in your work? Or what role do you think they should play in your work?
Luana?
So, you know, I believe, you know, again, I'll go back to the voice of the customer. I think that if we listen more to students in terms of how they want to experience education, that's not saying that, you know, because they ask for it, that's automatically what they get. But I am certain that we'll have a lot higher level of student engagement when they feel like they're a part of the conversation. What I've learned from the young people that I get exposed to, they like to feel like they have a voice in the things that are happening around them in their life. So I like the direction that the board has moved in in terms of adding a student board member or student trustee. And I understand they're moving towards adding some committees and task force. But I think even beyond that, creating space for everyday students who are not necessarily on a committee or a task force to engage or express their opinion about something will help them. Again, it goes to the sense of belonging and community. And I think acceptance is, feeling accepted by other people has its place. But I think feeling like you belong wherever you are has a certain amount of strength in terms of being able to feel empowered and capable of accomplishing things as an individual.
Well, I, so that I won't be accused of taking credit for this as I was accused of taking Crawford's credit for Crawford's when I came on board and became a strong advocate for the Crawford community because they were not receiving services and had been neglected for years. But I will say, concerning your question, when I came on the board four and a half years, I had served on the University Auxiliary Board at Cal State U.S.A. Marcos for ten years and it chaired it. It's the nonprofit foundation there. And in that process, there was a student on that board whom I got to meet who was a student in the business school there at Cal State U.S.A. Marcos. And in our discussions, I learned that he had been on the school board out in Alpine or somewhere out in the East County. And we had a running dialogue throughout his time and beyond when he went on to UCLA for his law degree. And we always have a student and a student board member. So when I got on the board for San Diego City Schools, the Unified School District, I wanted, I started attending the ASB meetings and I wanted to know, why didn't they have a board member? And I started advocating for them to become more active and involved. Then Dan from the Tax Collector's Office came out and visited with them and we just kept it going. And next thing I knew, I went to a workshop in northern part with other school board members and lo and behold, there was another school board member. So I worked with Jerry Yang, who was the ASB leader for that particular year. And I told him, I said, you know, other places are doing it, you might want to consider it. Jerry did a lot of that research and foundation for getting a school board member involved. And when he left, we had the election and our current board member was very aggressive and he was able to pull things together so that we now have a board member. My position is I'd love to see another board member, another student board member on there. And we've begun to talk about doing that. But I've always believed that students should have a voice. It goes back to when I was a student at Duke, was in charge of a dorm with two hundred girls and we were known as the campus politicians because we ran things on that campus. And as such, I believe that students should have an active voice and they need to lead it. They don't need us to tell them how to do their thing. They need to lead what they want to have done. And so we work together, work together as a board to try to implement those things which can be implemented. And I'm sorry, I know your time is getting short and I'm getting some zings about my name.
Yeah, we're getting, why don't we get close to closing statements? But real quick, just yes or no on the ballot measure for district-only elections? Luana, are you in support of district-only elections? Yeah. And Sharon? You both are?
Yes, it doesn't matter. You still have to be able to work together in order to accomplish anything. So I've demonstrated that I know how to work with people and I know how to advocate for my interests, which is my community.
Thank you. Yeah, why don't we give you each two minutes to close? And Sharon, you can go first.
Thank you for this opportunity to share. And I would like to say that I've been on this board for four and a half years in the primary. Although I wasn't supported by this paper, I was able to get ten percent more of you to, the citizens, to vote for me. And if you're pleased with what I've been doing and would like to offer additional comments or whatever, if you know how to access me. I personally feel that I've been working hard for this district and for the citizens of District E, for the students. And I'd like the opportunity to continue to serve, to accomplish the more things that we've been able to do, some revolutionary things in terms of what we're doing with discipline, the things that we've been able to manage with, just doing away with the number of suspensions, expulsions that we have. We have some additional work to be done. We plan on continuing that work and ensuring that more of our students are learning, more of our students are able to be successful in this society. I don't come with an attitude of woe is me, woe are our children. My attitude is if you open the door, give me access, help me to obtain that, then I will prove that I can learn, do whatever is necessary and be just as successful as you or anybody else. And so that's my attitude for my students. I believe that we can do better for our students. We're working to accomplish those things. And I'd like four more years between now and November third. Vote for Dr. Sharon Whitehurst Payne. I've been your representative for four and a half years and I'd like to continue for another four years. Oh, don't vote twice now because that's illegal, just vote once for me. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Luana? You're muted.
Thank you again for another great conversation. I really enjoyed the opportunity to speak with you and be in community. I want to start by saying that insanity is continuing to do what you've been doing and expecting to get different results. And I also want to say that we are in a moment where we have the greatest opportunity to make changes for exponential improvement if we choose to. Because one of the hardest parts of change is to get people to stop doing what they were doing so they can adopt a new behavior. Everybody has had to stop. So this is a great opportunity to look at the lessons that we've learned from distance learning, look at the possibilities and the opportunities to end results across the board. And I present myself as a person who has professional and academic experience as well as lived experience. I didn't come your traditional path. I was not a politician or the person who ran the school. I was actually in foster care after some adverse childhood experiences. And then I became a teen mom and raised my children. I was a single parent while going to school and working. And I've been able to accomplish the things I've accomplished through community support, great mentorship opportunity, but also a lot of hard work. And so I am not just someone who will be asking our students to do more, do better. I can stand there and talk to them from a place of understanding their challenges and their perspectives. As a person who had children in school while I was a single parent, I can relate to the plight of parents who are struggling right now to navigate not only the pandemic challenges, but just how to help their child with distance learning. I think that not only am I the right candidate to be on the board for our current circumstances, I think I am your best choice to be on the board to help chart a path towards a future that is preparing us for whatever circumstances arise. Our kids are in school today being prepared for jobs in industries that don't even exist. And if we don't prepare them with strong critical thinking skills and a strong sense of how to navigate and manage change, which will only become more constant, we will have failed them. I want to be a partner in the solution, Dr. Luana Richmond for San Diego Unified. I, of course, have always been and will remain available through a variety of analog and digital channels. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you both of you for taking the time today, I really appreciate it.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.